locations could be a destination for them naturally, or it could be a link to one of the other fixed route buses. Or they can go to the two bus stations in Auburn and Lewiston and catch a ride, you know, anywhere within the system with a free transfer. And the same thing happens on the, on the return. So when they book a trip, you know, to go, maybe, maybe they have a medical appointment and they need to go to St. Mary's. And they're, they're being picked up in New Auburn by a van. They're brought to, they're probably brought to Oak Street. And then Oak Street would take them up to St. Mary's on the Sabatius Street with a free transfer. The system takes into account the time of your appointment and it backs into what time you should be picked up to make your connection and get to the, to the hospital. And then the return booking is also coordinated at that original reservation time. So you can, you can say that your appointment's at 10:00, I want to be picked up, you know, at 11:15 or after. You would actually board the fixed route bus there at St. Mary's at 11:15, 11:20, 25, whatever their schedule is. And then when you get back to Oak Street, the van will be there to take you to your destination in one of the demand response zones. Any questions on the demand response zones? Should I entertain questions?
Yeah, yeah, I think questions are going to be really good. I think, I just want to just weigh in on a couple of things here. One, appreciate everything that Larry's done. One of these initiatives alone would have been a huge lift, but we're doing them at the same time, right? We're bringing on a new, a new vendor, as Larry said, after 20-plus years. And we are making a significant shift to how we will be providing transit in Lewiston and Auburn. And so that is a big change for us. And it's going, it's going to take time to get used to this new system. We have individuals in the city that have used transit their entire life. They're used to when that bus is going to come. They know what time it's going to come, where it's going to go, where their connection happens. That all shifts. And some of it might, I think the team has done a really good job of trying to keep some of those consistent. Because they know, they've tracked. We know how many people get on at certain stops. We know where they go. We know where their final destination is. So they're trying to keep some of that because a lot of that has to do with employment, school, whatever it might be. So I think they've done a very good job of, of maintaining that the best that we can. Areas where people will feel their service in Auburn is diminished, there are those where they no longer have the stop that's right near where they are located and they have to do the demand. It'll take time for someone to realize that's actually an enhanced service. Some people will not feel that way. But because there's a little more planning, or there's a little more waiting if you didn't plan ahead. That's, that's the challenge with that. And so, but it's going to be education and I think we have, we have other things in place on making sure we're communicating, educating this out to the public. And we'll work through that as we, as it rolls out. I did kind of press Larry to come before we go live because I wanted you all to hear it because I know you'll be receiving some of those phone calls first. And so, just so you have a good understanding of it, know what this process is. Larry, we did the study probably in 20...
2021.
Is when it was completed.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then we did a, we did a rider survey in December and January of '23. And so between those two, that's where we came up with the 25 most recommended system improvements. And part of, a lot of what we're accomplishing here, we nailed 16 of them. So 16 out of 25 of, and some of those were commuter service to Augusta, commuter service to Bangor. You know, those are things that the two cities themselves aren't going to undertake. But improving technology, introducing demand response, increasing frequency, right? So the number of one-seat rides from either city is going to nearly triple going up into the Walmart and the Target and the mall area. And we're maintaining service to both, both key hospitals. We're maintaining service to the largest grocery facilities that we have serviced. So, you know, those core community needs, we still have a fixed route footprint on. It's just, how are we going to incorporate the periphery, right? So if, if part of a three-mile route, we move, we move 150 people a day, but only 16 of those people are on that outer mile and a half. And we can get another half a trip out of this bus if we, if we just segment out those drivers, find another way to incorporate them into the system and improve efficiency. So what, what we were covering with seven, seven routes and six buses, we're doing, we're doing nine routes with six buses and then adding the, adding the vans. Another benefit is that we've always had ADA paratransit and it's always been two vans around the city. The demand response fleet is an additional two vans. This technology is going to allow us to co-mingle so we can maximize utilization based on geography. So it doesn't, it's not just a specialty vehicle, or it's not just a demand response van that you're eligible to ride in. You could ride in one of the ADA paratransit vans. All of the vans will have handicap accessibility so they can provide any role. There's a lot of moving parts. My three minutes took 15, sorry, but...
Well, I might have chimed in on that. So, you know, I'm glad Larry mentioned how many of those improvements, enhancements are being implemented in this, this rollout. So, thanks, Mayor.
Questions or comments? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this. Since the study and everything, we are now having our general assistance down to 121 Mills Street. And it's also got the drop-in center twice a week and then it's going to have the Y with the grocery program. Have you taught where the City of Auburn, General Assistance, Community Development, and the drop-in center to try to coordinate how you're going to get their guests to the facility and back to where they need to be dropped off?
Is that the facility near Barker Arms? Okay. So service to Barker Arms continues. We did not pull out of New Auburn. There's actually enhanced service to Barker Arms. And so that will be, that will be the stop that will service the drop-in center. But during weekdays, there are, there are times where that facility is being, is being serviced twice an hour. So, yeah.
Reason I brought it up is on any given day, they may have 100, they may have 175 people. And so that is where you're going to get the volume depending on how they got there and how they want to get home because they may have walked there, but they're going to take a ride someplace different.
Sure. Yeah. So we can certainly watch the volumes, see if we run into capacity constraints. We do have a varied fleet in the full-size buses. We have, we have 29 footers with, with 31 passengers and we have 35 footers with, with 43 passengers. So we may be able to, based on, based on ridership, we may be able to redirect a larger-capacity vehicle to a higher-capacity or higher utilization route.
Thank you kindly.
Sure. Counsel Count.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, to add to Phil's comments and Larry's, the L A T C committee at our last meeting talked about intentionally looking at these numbers carefully every month because we are, it's a new system, we're learning a lot. And so there is going to be a commitment, not just education of those who ride, but education of those, you know, looking at the numbers and seeing where we can make those changes. So I'm, I'm encouraged by the flexibility and what, as I understand it, and our ability to make some of those nuanced changes, so.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Platt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Larry, for that presentation. You guys are doing a great job. And my questions are more from where we sit on the council. You guys are the professionals with transportation. I just had a question with the expiration or the ending of the previous contract. Can you just inform the council on what are we able to do now with the new vendor? Was that an operational decision, a price decision, all of the above?
So because we are substantially funded by the Federal Transit Administration, there are requirements, if you third-party contract, you're required to go out every five years. So we, in the, in the past couple iterations of contracting with Western Maine, we've gone out to RFP. We knew that the transit study was, was coming and, and so we did a couple of shorter-duration RFPs. Western Maine was the only one that, that responded. And then this, this was the, this was the year that we've expired all of our potential extensions and we had to go out again. The Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee, based on the track record of not getting a lot of interest from other parties and wanting to be sure that we're, you know, doing due diligence and getting the best bang for the buck, issued this RFP with a five-year term. You know, inherently, there's a risk there if there are performance issues or, or somebody's not delivering, but then you work through your termination clause. But that's what happened and that's when we got two responsive bids. And we wound up with two qualified responses. And the decision was made based, ultimately, based on price. Yep.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Just, just to follow up so I'm clear here, On Demand is Monday through Friday, 8 to 5?
No, it's also, no, that's, that's when you can call and speak with a reservationist.
So what's the hour?
6 to 6.
6 to 6?
Monday through Friday, 6 to 6, 9 to, 9 to 4 or 9 to 5 on Saturday.
And that aligns, does that align with the fixed route?
Identical. Identical.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The big buses are on, the vans are on.
Okay, great. And if you haven't, you probably have because this is very thorough, but if you haven't, could you coordinate with LAP so that they can let their riders know about On Demand to get them from the, the station at Exit 75?
Yes. And particularly because the contractor is also our contractor.
Right.
You know, and our relationship with Maine DOT on the Transit Division is, is extremely good. So they use the same booking technology with Token Transit. So, so we have talked about doing a backend fare exchange where somebody could access the CityLink Token Transit app and, you know, buy a 950 one-way ticket where they get the $1.50 CityLink one-way fare to one of the bus stations and then the, they get a free transfer onto LAP and then we just transfer the funds between the two organizations on the backend. So that, that'll be very easy to accommodate. The bonus, at the same time, the LAP is now servicing Exit 75, now we have demand response service where we can kind of do it on our own as well. You know, so which is, which is, especially on the employment side of things, I mean, if you look at that footprint of the area around 75, that is all, you know, employment-based. There's not a lot of residential focus in that footprint. You do get all of the residential stuff up on Minnetonka Court and, and out that way. And, and obviously in the New Auburn side. So, and even on the Minnetonka Court, we, we cover Rodman Road. So we're catching some of the area's largest employers, you know, in, in that demand response area as well. So I, there is a tremendous amount of opportunity. The worst part of this is when I come back to you next year and we want to increase the budget because we need to add two more vans because the van is so high. So I don't know if it's a good problem to have or not, but, you know, we're laying the foundation to be as efficient as possible, maximize utilization, and then have as much information about our ridership, where they're from, where they're going, you know, developing and recognizing patterns and truly being responsive in how we deliver transit in, in this area. And it's just never been like that before.
Thank you. Any, any final comments from the council?
Thank you very much. Thank you and all the folks on the committee. It's, we know it's a very heavy lift to switch from one system to another, but they're very positive improvement.
I did neglect to share the very last page of this multi, multi, multi-page document. I did a departures board for Great Falls and a departures board for Oak Street. So if you want to try and visualize how heavy a transit presence we truly have, how, how much is really going on in our area? If you look at these daily departures from, from your two bus stations, it's impressive. And it's only going to get better. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Our next item is a demo of the new city website by Liz Allen, Communications Director.
All the Allens on the mics this evening. So Mayor and Council, I am delighted as always to be here with you this evening. I'm here to provide you with a quick, but hopefully exciting, update on our new city website. So redesigning and refreshing the city's website with a focus on resident and visitor experience, in quotations, has been a goal for you, for the city manager, for staff, and it's been my honor to work on this project for close to a year now. We launched our current website in July of 2010, if you can imagine. At the time, it was cutting-edge and we are, remain very proud of that site. Keeping in mind that the average lifespan of, of a good website is about two to five years, our current site has served us incredibly well for all this time. I'm actually a little sentimental about that site. We've all worked really hard on it for quite some time. The why behind the need for a new website is clear, just based on the, the age of our current site. But to elaborate just a tiny bit, the design and navigation are outdated. It's difficult, well, nearly impossible to really find anything right now. In fact, our search bar feature failed a week or two ago, so we had to take it off the site completely. So this site is circling the drain and we're ready to move on to something new. The site is slow and clunky. Yes, that is a technical term, and it's not particularly mobile-friendly. One of the most pressing reasons for us to have a new website is accessibility. Per the Americans with Disabilities Act, we've had, we have an impending deadline to become WCAG or compliant with our website, social media, and all of our digital content. W C A G or Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. That's a set of technical standards that improve the accessibility for web content for people with a wide range of disabilities. Lastly, the creation of a new website was established as a city council, city manager goal for 2024, 25. So I'll give you a live look in just a minute, but here are some of the key features of our beautiful new website. The design is fresh, it is clean, it's modern, it's user-friendly, all of the best things. Navigation and menus have been simplified and there is a powerful curated search which will take people exactly where they want to go on the site. The new site thankfully is mobile-friendly, which is huge news for us. And this is one of my favorite features. With just a click, the entire site can be translated into over 95 languages. That's pretty impressive. The new site puts news alerts and our calendar front and center. We now have the ability to show, this can be annoying, but we'll use it sparingly, a pop-up alert on the front page for things like parking bans or road closures or other newsworthy and important news. The backend of the site, can't tell you how much, how much better it is, the admin side of things is so great. The staff working on it already love it compared to the old site. We have a wonderful new e-notify alert center which will send email and text alerts to our subscribers. And I think this one is pretty cool. There is a Share This Page button on every single page of the website so that if someone stumbles upon content that is particularly meaningful to them, they can click that and it will share it straight to their, their own individual social media. Very proud to report that our new site is completely ADA compliant. That's ahead of the deadline set by the, by the ADA. And it's responsive website design, RWD. That means it looks great and it works great on smartphones, on tablets, on iPads, et cetera, both Apple and Android devices. That's a huge upgrade for us. Okay, so here's what to expect in the next couple, few weeks. Our website committee is hard at work migrating and customizing content as we speak. Staff training will continue as we get more members of the team up to speed and involved in the site. And we are planning our public launch for the new website on or about, depending on when all the servers connect, October 1st. So really close. Of course, there will be continuous improvements as we go, as you can imagine, after all these years, there is so much content and a lot of moving parts to this, this move. But our team is very excited about the new website and we sure hope that you like it as much as we do. So, let's take a peek. I could throw this to all your devices because it's really cool. We're not going to dive too deep because I want to save some stuff for the actual launch and, and for the time when you can actually explore it yourself. But I hope the first thing that you notice is the beautiful photos. These were taken by local photographers. You can click through them if you want to. Richard Plour, Daniel Marquis, and even our communications staff provided some of the photos. In this corner, you can see there's our pop-up alert. Current alert says we have a new website. You can click for more information or you can close that to get out of your, get it out of your way, which I appreciate. That's where we'll send, we'll, we'll share timely news. Like I said, parking bans, election updates, road closures, anything that's critically important. Next, you'll note these charming little icons. These are our quicklink buttons. And these take visitors to our most frequently visited pages. They're right there, front and center, can't miss them. For example, if you click on Report an Issue, it takes you to our Citizen Request Center where people can send us requests and updates and share news with us. And let's see, what else can we click? Employment Opportunities, another great one. People can see all our available positions, they can learn how to become different roles within the city. Apps are right there. I mentioned our translator button earlier. That's in the upper right corner here. Right now, you can see it's set for English. And the click of the button, you can change it to any one of these languages. Let's see, let's try it, German. Can you cooperate with me tonight? Armenian, there we go. So you can see the whole site changes. Actually pretty cool. Great feature, we're really pleased to make this part as pain-free as possible for folks to, to access our information in the, the language that is easiest for them. In the left corner is our ADA accessibility widget. We want our city and our website to be fully accessible to all people, especially and including those with disabilities. So visitors, I, I hope will appreciate with a simple click to be able to customize things like the font size, contrast, colors used. They can stop that animation, so all the stuff that moves when you click on it, if they find that distracting, turn it right off. You can change the size of a cursor, make it dyslexia-friendly, a whole bunch of different accommodations, which I think is just wonderful. Lastly, I'll show you our menus, which are just hover menus at the top. As you move over them, you can see, nice, clean, clear, people can find exactly what they're looking for. They're broken down into groups that make sense for our users, I hope. Government, apartments, services within the city, community. If I click on this one, for example, this takes us to Community Development page, there's relatable links, there's pertinent staff, there's all sorts of plans. I chose this page because there's already some documents uploaded and this shows the document center, which is fantastic and fully searchable. So if you're looking for something, I don't know, Plan Year 24, any document that has that referenced is right there for you to open. So all of that stuff is searchable in a whole new way, which I think is fantastic. So that's it for this evening. I can't wait for you to explore the site on your own and thanks so much for making this new site possible. We are very pleased with our vendor, it's ReVize, R-E-V-I-Z-E. They are a wonderful government solution and have been fantastic to work through. We're going to have great, robust customer service from them and they're already hitting it out of the park. So unless you have questions, that's it for me.
Questions or comments from the council? Counsel Platt.
Yay!
Beautiful. My question is on the payment. Did the revamp of the website, did we look at our payment processing abilities at all? I know as a citizen, I struggle because we have one credit card longer than we usually do. Sometimes they don't work out of the track.
The capacity, yeah.
I wonder how can I do this? Do this thing. It's easier for you.
I should be on mic. But in the, but in the back of my mind, I'm thinking it's less work for Emily, it's less work on the clerks. How can we drive our citizens to use the site to ease some of the operational burdens on the city?
That's a great question. We are using more and more technology as far as permit requests and all sorts of applications. We're moving those on here. This comes with a fantastic forms portal that we'll be using to great success, I'm sure. The financial thing really is something for the Finance Director to decide. And I know there's fee structures and there's certain things with credit cards that we'll work through, but I absolutely see that in the future. And that's one of the biggest conveniences that we could possibly offer to people and save them the trip to, to City Hall, especially when mechanics row is torn up, you know, four days out of five. That's a great question, thank you. Stay tuned.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel White.
Some of the functions we have now with the current website, do they just sort of flip over automatically to the new website, like Report It for Public Works or something like that?
That's been rebuilt and, and anything that we have reported is, I think, using the same thing as the permit software that, this will just click to Lucidity or whatever the, the software is, I forget what they're using these days. But yes, for sure. Seamless and smooth.
Other questions or comments? No, thank you very much and thank you to the team. I know there's a lot of work that's gone into this. We're really looking forward to the, see the new site in a couple of weeks.
You're going to love it. I promise.
The balance of the work session will be taken up by three executive sessions. The council will reconvene in a public meeting at the council meeting at 7:00 P. M. The first executive session pursuant to Juan MRSA, Section 405, 6D for Labor Negotiations with the Police Command. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second. Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Weisner. All those in favor? The council will be in executive session. The council will reconvene in a public meeting at the council meeting at 7:00 P.M. The first executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405, 6D for labor negotiations with the Police Command. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Move by Council Walker, seconded by Council Weisner. All those in favor? The council will be in executive session.
Thank you. If we could have the city councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm City Councilor at Large.
Good evening, Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councilor.
Good evening, Tim Cowan, Ward Two City Councilor.
Good evening, Steve Milks, Ward Three City Council.
Good evening, Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening, Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Good evening, Leroy Warcraft, City Council, Ward Five.
Good evening, Adam Platt, City Councilor at Large.
Good evening, Brendan Edwards, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item tonight are consent items. There's several items on the consent agenda. Confirming Chief Moe's appointment of David Straight as a Constable with firearm. Several renewal of auto graveyard junkyard permits for Randy's Auto, M&amp;P Auto, Prolorize New England, and Isadora T. Miller. I would note, for the record, there is typographical error in Consent Agenda Five relative to the Isadora T. Miller license, and the address is actually 79 and 80 Old Hotel, excuse me, Old Hotel Road, not Hotel Road, and the clerk will make note of that and make the corrections. Regarding the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Weisner. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the September 2nd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Council Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Council Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. There are no communications, presentations, and recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to the first open session. Any member of the public is invited to speak to the council on any item related to city business that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
My name is Peter Rubens. I'm with GrowLA and I'm Chair of the GrowLA River Working Group. Our mission statement is to be the conduit between Lewiston and Auburn for best use of the river. We've been working both with Lewiston and Auburn for the past 10 or 15 years for a number of things, and mostly around reimagining the Andrus Goggin River into the eyes of Muskie's ideal of swimmable and fishable. Coming up from one of the top 10 polluted rivers in the country up to where we want it to be today. There's two things that are going on right now. One of them is our appeal for reclassification of the river from the lowest Class C up to B. We've been doing river water tests for dissolved oxygen for the past 10 years within multiple organizations in the state, the Land Trust, Bates College, Andrus Goggin River Water Council, and Friends Mary Meeting Bay. And we've appealed for Class B several times, and we've been rejected because the Department of Environmental Protection says it doesn't meet their computer models. But the law says when a river meets a higher standard, it must then be regulated, classified, that higher standard. So we just finished a helicopter survey this past four months in this low water, hitting nine different locations from Lisbon Falls up over to the Gulf Island Pond, doing dissolved oxygen tests in June, July, August, and September. In the little handout that I handed out has a graph on the back, and it shows you exactly that it's met the seven parts per million every time during this low water period. So now we feel like we have the data to go to the Board of Environmental Protection, which meets October 16th in a public hearing, and people can address by mail or internet by October 22nd with their appeals for this reclassification. So we're trying to change the image of the river from the stinky loo to up to a Class B recreational for aesthetics. So that's the first thing, reclassification. The number two is Brookfield's application for the next 40-year license to manufacture electricity at the Monty Hydro here. Both cities have been working with them, and we've appealed to them for a number of things. Forty years ago, I was here, and we appealed to Central Main Power for walking paths and history trail, and Central Main Power thanked us for our application and said, "Not now." So for the past 40 years, Central Main Power and new owners have really not had to do anything. So you have to look at this next 40-year license, and I won't be here for that. But we've appealed for 40 timed releases over the Great Falls. This falls is one of the assets that this town, the two cities have, that isn't recognized as much as it should be. So asking for 40 timed releases, maybe on Friday nights, bring people downtown, that kind of thing. Brookfield has turned around and offered us six timed releases. So we need to work together, both cities, and see if we can put the pressure on them to get what we're asking for. So I'm hoping that the city council can talk about this and endorse our request for a Class B. And October 16th, if it's possible for the mayor or some of the council members to come to Augusta, it's 16th at 9:00 a.m., and I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. Mayor Harmon, City Manager, Crowell, the City Council. My name is Joe Thomas. I'm the President of the Mogamata Transit Union, Local 714, Portland, Maine. We represent the current drivers, the city-linked drivers in Lewiston, Auburn. We have a successorship clause in our contract with them, and right now, we have no communication with RTW and Salt Lake City, Utah, who was awarded the current contract through the LATC. Our members want to come to work, but they're getting layoff notices at the end of the month, on September 30th, and they have not been given any information where to go. They have a job. But our successorship clause, in simple terms, we follow the work. And we just want to sit down. We want this to be a peaceful transition with the cities, with LATC, and with RTW and Salt Lake City. We have every intention of representing them going forward, and we will have a meeting coming up shortly on discussions how to go forward. But I can tell you, you've got citizens in these two cities that need transportation, and you have qualified drivers to do that work. And it takes a long time to train bus operators. It's a stressful job. It's a hard job. And I just want to let you know that that's something to take into consideration. We want to sit down and talk with RTW. We expect to still represent these drivers, and we will have to do what we have to do come October 1st. If there's any questions you'd like to ask, please ask.
Thank you very much for your information. The open sessions are not an interactive session with the council, but I'm sure that the council has heard your information and will take it into consideration.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. First, I'll introduce myself. My name is Frank Burney. I own a bunch of cannabis stores called Marijuanaville. I currently have 10 stores up and running, opening our 11th this weekend in Lewiston, another one in Orland in three weeks, and I've got seven more on the agenda. The only reason I mention that is because I'm very familiar with the city council meetings, the planning board meetings, et cetera, select board meetings, as we go from there. Before we start, I'd like to say I'd like to thank so far the City of Auburn. It's been great. The planning board, who had that hearing, they were very receptive. I appreciate that. Then even through the licensing hearing where it got denied, the city clerk, the people who came to do the inspection knowing it was going to go that way, they were very professional. They went for the procedures. So basically, the next step is where are we here now? Okay. So this is where it gets a little bit, how do I say this? I'm not trying to be mean. I don't want to accuse anybody, and I'm not trying to be aggressive, but I need to get my point across because what happened here just should never happen. the inspection knowing it was going to go that way, they were very professional and went for the procedures. So, basically, the next step is where are we here now? Okay? So, this is where it gets a little bit, a little bit, how do I say this? I'm not trying to be mean, and I don't want to accuse anybody, and I'm not trying to be aggressive, but I need to get my point across because what happened here just should never happen. What I usually do when I open up these stores, I go to towns. I call the town up. I do what I always do. I call the city clerk and I go, "City of Auburn, I'm looking to put a cannabis dispensary. What is your zoning?" I talk to somebody directly. They tell me what I need to do. They said, "Go out, find locations, call the code office, find if those locations are good," et cetera. So, I did this for a couple of months, and they kept shooting areas down, which is fine. I don't want to be an area not allowed to. Finally, we hit sixty-five Washington North, and the guy said, "You're all set. There's no, no, no problems with schools," none of that stuff. So, I go, "Okay, what's the next step?" He goes, he goes, "You have to have a meeting with me so I can show you that we're, you know, you're in the right zone," et cetera, before we go any further. So, we set up this meeting. Took about a week and a half before we had it. I went down to this building here. I sat, sat in a chair. He showed me it on the map. He said, "You're all good. Good to go." So, granted, I don't know how many people are familiar with the procedures, and I don't mean disrespect. I'm sure you guys do, but I've been in a lot of council meetings where the council members don't know how it works. I can't go any further without the lease. Okay? Can't get the lease without the city saying, "Yes, you're in the right zone." So, I looked at him. I go, "So, am I okay to get the lease?" And he goes, "You're good to go." I went out and took out a half a million dollar lease that I'm on the hook for right now, five hundred thousand dollar lease. Okay? Based on the code officer tell, or whoever it was telling me that that building is in the correct location. So, what I did next is I asked him, "What's the next?" Because every town's different. He said, "You've got to use a licensed consultant," or I don't know if it was engineer, whoever it was, but a Teradyne Consultants. So, I called him. He was going back. This started in December. He's going back and forth with the planning office. He's got comments and all that stuff. About six to eight weeks go by, I get a call, okay? A week before the meeting saying, "Frank, I don't tell you, we missed a school." I just like dropped. I'm like, "How does that even happen?" I mean, the, not to be disrespectful, but the job is to know where you can put those things, you know, to know there's a school. How do, how do you miss a school? So, I did exactly all my due diligence to this point. If, if in the beginning they would've said, "You can't do it," I wouldn't be here asking for this if it wasn't something that the city, you know, put in front of me. Up until now, like I said, anytime it's not a property, if a town doesn't want me somewhere, I don't go that further. But I'm already into this thing. I obviously have to see this all the way through, whether the next steps are other appeals or whatever it has to go, has to go, because I'm, I'm on something hooked for a large amount of money, and I want the property. Now, where we're at, at this point, is what can be done? There's either two things that happen. One, you've got a proactive, usually council or city that wants business and wants to find a way to say something to work. At the end of the day, without being mean, this is one thousand percent a mistake on the city. The question is, can it be fixed? There are ways to fix it if you choose to do so. If you choose not to do so, then I would just be curious of what would the reasons be? And one of the reasons people say, "Well, if we do it with you, we got to do it with everybody." Well, hopefully this doesn't happen again. This is a mistake that there should be a list of schools on the walls that's checked every week so that you don't tell a prospective businessperson like myself, who's going to invest a ton of money in the community, that it's okay to go do this. And then we get to the point where, well, now you can't. All the ordinance that are written in cities anyway, there's, it's kind of a backward procedure. They should have something different done. I'll give an example of what happened to me in Waterville. Waterville, similar situation, but I got the approval from them. They made something a safe zone, and then you can't have within five hundred feet of safe zone. So, I went to the council and the same thing. I'm like, "You know, you guys gave me permission." And they go, "We messed up." City, I can't say enough about City of Waterville. The Mayor Jay and all that, they worked through it, took four council meetings, but they figured a way to get it in so that I could do it. Because again, they gave the, and since then, they've changed the way they do it, so that won't happen anymore. They notify a butters when they're gonna, you know what I'm saying, when you're gonna do that, you notify the other people to make sure that somebody doesn't have a tenant going in or there's something out in the project. So, that's where we're at now. So, the next question is, why are these barriers put in there? Why do you have these distances? For those people who aren't familiar, it's supposed to be for safety of the children, right? I mean, you don't want children running into a cannabis store. The way the ordinance reads, it's seven hundred fifty, it's a city ordinance. The state can be at five hundred. It's seven hundred fifty feet from property line to property line. Okay? There's a couple of issues here. One, again, to keep people safe, there's no way, it's twenty-two hundred feet to walk around to get to my door. So, it's not like a seven hundred fifty feet. There's no way that you're ever going to get there. That's the first step. And then you still have to cross over roads without crosswalks. And so, as far as a safety issue, there is no safety. The next thing I said, "Well, does a school have a problem with this?" I've never honestly been to the school, Spurwick. I never even heard of it. I went in there and talked to them. They have absolutely no problem with it. They actually kind of gave me the impression that this is kind of a little bit, you know, it's so far away, why is this even an issue? And I said, "'Because it's a city ordinance.'" The next thing I found out, which this is, might be a way that is around this, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, or if anyone's even looked into this, your ordinance says property line to property line. Okay? I just got off the phone with one of the state OCP people on the way here. They leased that building. I thought it was the front building. It's not even that. It's the building way in the back. They don't have access to the rest of the property. So, if you look at, like I got a store in Bangor, they go from my unit to the other, you know, to the houses, because you have a three hundred foot variance. If you, if you're renting a space, kind of like a commercial subdivision, if you're in a commercial subdivision in Auburn, you go doorstep to doorstep. So, I don't know what the difference is here, but also I'm saying, there is something to look at here where if we went the property line of the church, the school space that they leased, again, they don't lease the rest of the property. Has nothing to do with them. To my new proposed property line, I would meet that seven hundred fifty distance. So, there is a way to get there without worrying about changing ordinance or anything like that, because I know that is an option, because honestly, there are some things that they should consider in the ordinance that I think, like I said, the seven fifty of a straight line might be a little of an issue. The other thing is, is there any type of waivers or things that can be done? I'm finding contradictory information on that from the council to say, "Hey, we can weigh the seven fifty and make it five hundred like the state," and then I meet it. With all due respect, I'm not here to, like I said, try to be aggressive or anything like that. I'm just put in a position where I did exactly what I was supposed to do. I got to the point where I understand things happen, mistakes happen. There was a big mistake happened. Is there a way to fix it? I think there's definitely a way to fix it if, if, you know, if the cities will ever work with me. If not, then obviously, you know, it's got to go whatever the next steps have to be. Because this is a, not be, again, I'm going to back off a little bit. I don't want to be mean, but this is negligent incompetence that this happened. This should not happen. You should not have a guy coming in, putting a half a million dollars into a, in a community on the procedures that you follow exactly how you guys do it, and the guy doesn't have his job done correctly. And I don't mean to be mean, but at the end of the day, that's what happened. If he would've done all the work or whoever's supposed to, they would've just been, beginning, "You can't do that one," and then I would've gone on to some of the other ones I was looking at that are now gone. But anyway, I appreciate everybody's time. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the council for the applicant? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. The city clerk can present information to the council in response to the application.
I'm going to have to see here.
Good evening. My name is Emily Carrington. I'm the city clerk for the City of Auburn. I've been in my position since April of two thousand twenty-four. In my role, I am responsible for issuing business licenses for the City of Auburn. For purpose of this hearing concerning the denial of a medical marijuana retail store license proposed at sixty-five Washington Street North, I am considering the standards for license as outlined in chapter fourteen, section fourteen, six fifty-nine of the city's Code of Ordinances. Chapter fourteen, section six fifty-nine, subsection A three states, states marijuana businesses may not be located on property within seven hundred fifty feet of the property line of a pre-existing public or private school K through twelve. For the purposes of this section, school includes a public school, private school, or public preschool program as defined in twenty A MSRA section one, or any other educational facility that serves children from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. Required setbacks shall be measured as the most direct, level, shortest, without regard to the intervening structures or objects, straight line distance between the school property line and the property line of the parcel of land on which the marijuana business is located. The proposed marijuana retail store to be located at sixty-five Washington Street North does not meet these licensing setback requirements. It is too close to an existing school or other educational facility as defined in the city's ordinance. On July thirtieth, using the licensing standard outlined in chapter fourteen of the city's Code of Ordinances, I attended the inspection on July thirtieth with the applicant present. A physical measurement was performed at the inspection by a member of the planning department and as described in ordinance as the most direct, level, shortest, without regard to intervening structures or objects, straight line distance between the prop, between the school property line and the property line of the parcel of land on which the marijuana business is located. The measured distance from property line to property line at the inspection was four hundred and sixty-four feet. Using the standards for what constitutes a school as outlined in chapter fourteen, the main Department of Education's website lists all schools licensed, which states that the location is a private special purpose school serving pre-K through grade twelve. And I've included that chart directly from the main Department of Education's website. So, based on this measurement being under seven hundred and fifty feet, the application was denied, and I issued a letter of denial, which can be found in packet, in your packet this evening on page sixty-three. The second facility noted, the Catholic Charities Education Services for the blind and visually impaired children, was noted in the inspection due to the title of the facility. The distance from the property line of this facility and the proposed business at sixty-five Washington Street North was measured at two hundred and thirty-three feet. While it is not listed as a school under the main DOE, the city's ordinance by definition includes any other educational facility that serves children from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. Upon calling the facility, the staff informed me that it's an office building that is used by resource officers, and children do not visit the facility. This may or may not be considered within the city's definition of any other educational facility. I would like to point out that there's no provision in the city's Code of Ordinances that allows a waiver or exception to be granted to these licensing setback requirements, and further that the Office of Cannabis Policy states that a registered medical dispensary may not be located within five hundred feet of the property line of a pre-existing public or private school. In your packet this evening is also included a letter from the planning department dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, that states, prior to applying for a license and planning board of approval, the applicant was informed in writing by the planning department that the business would be ineligible for licensing if the applicant proceeded with the planning board process and licensing process. On April eighth, twenty twenty-five, the applicant proceeded with a planning board approval, where staff recommended the denial of the application based on the concerns of proximity to the existing school, which you can see a copy of that in your packet this evening as well. And approval was granted based on the zoning language found within chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances. And the minutes from that meeting state again that the applicant was informed that it did not meet the licensing setback requirements in the ordinance. When we received the application on June eighteenth, on or about June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, we proceeded with scheduling the inspection, which led us to this moment. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the clerk from the applicant?
Yes. Okay. We'll start with, with the, I stipulated already, they said that, you know, it didn't meet requirements. After I was told it did. Okay? So, again, I'm only here because they were saying it was okay, then they're saying it's not. Now, I'm just here trying to find a way to make it work. As far as the property lines they measured, I also talked with the planning, Teradyne Consultants talked with the planning office. I can, I can actually cut a piece of that property off and increase that distance. And I also talked to OCP, and they actually didn't even know how to respond when I said the school was not, they're leasing that space. They go, "We've never encountered this." Every time we've dealt with a school, it's always property line to property line. I don't know how you can determine a property line if they don't have control of the rest of the property. So, if you read the ordinance, it doesn't even talk about leases or anything like that. So, it's not, it's actually open for interpretation. That's up to three attorneys I've talked to already, that it should be defined in the ordinances as far as the lease space. So, those, I dispute the property boundaries.
Sir, sir, do you have questions of the clerk? This isn't an opportunity to restate your case. It's an opportunity to-
I'm just responding to-
Ask clerks the clerk question.
Okay. Is there anywhere in the ordinance where it says anything about lease space?
No.
No. So, it doesn't define actually what property lines are talking about?
States here that it is in regard to the school property line and the property line of the parcel of land on which the marijuana business is located.
Okay. So, but is, does the school control the church beside that building? The answer is no. I spoke with them directly. They do not control the rest of that property. So, the property line of the school is that building. You can call them and find out. You can, you can get their leases and find out. And again, there's no mention of, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm giving away that this could be interpreted. The next, the next question is, do we even talk about chopping a piece of the land off to make that distance?
Speak about that at the inspection. We-
We, no, we didn't. I know we didn't. That's what I'm saying. That's another thing that I'm bringing up to increase that distance. I'm trying to get to that distance by somebody working with us, because I know you guys have the ability to say, "We can approve this based on they meet that requirements by chopping the piece of property off and approving the fact that that is, lease space is not considered." Now, I have OCP calling me tomorrow to see what they think. Inspector seems to lead on a sign that they're not going, because they know they have strip malls. They don't use the whole strip mall. They use that lease space. Right? Now, in a commercial subdivision, is this a commercial subdivision? Or has it ever been?
No, it is not.
Okay. In a commercial subdivision, though, what would be the difference between this and a commercial subdivision?
It would be, I believe, from door to door is how it is defined in the ordinance.
Right. What, why would this not be, I know it's not, but why would it not be, just so we know the difference between a commercial subdivision and a leased property?
I don't believe that the clerk can answer a question substantive-
Okay.
-question about the underlying policy basis. You've asked the clerk if it's a commercial subdivision. She's answered no. I think the council understands the point.
Okay. I just don't, I'll be honest with you. I don't know the difference. I'm trying to find out what it is, because it's different spaces are controlled by different people.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Ms. Burney, I'm the city attorney. My name is Mike Carey. Just as a, a point of clarification, the ordinance discussion of commercial subdivision does talk about the door, front door of the marijuana business to the property line of the school. And so, the, kind of the language around what, where does the school measurement start is the property line, regardless of whether it's a commercial subdivision or not?
Right. So, can I ask him a question? I'm just trying to get so everybody understands the whole thing. So, the church owns a lease space. Do they have rights to the other buildings on the property? If you lease a property, do you have control of another guy's property? I mean, normally in a lease. A lease is for a set area. That's all I'm, I'm saying. I have a lot of leased properties, and when I have bars and I clubbed, my lease space is my lease space. And if you do the state, they go from that lease. That's all I'm saying. There is open to interpretation of the property lines of that. So, we could meet that seven fifty rule if the council decided to.
Thank you. Do you have any other further questions for the clerk?
No.
Questions of the clerk from the council. Council plat.
Thank you. Thank you. I've got one question. Does the, and I guess it's just a question of clarification. Does the school own the full parcel of land that we're discussing right now, that is not the marijuana? We're talking about this parcel where we're measuring setbacks. What's the ownership of that parcel? Is that pertinent to this discussion?
I answer it.
It's, the, the address that's given for the school is fifteen Sacred Heart Place.
So, I think the question, Madam Clerk, is if the school owns the parcel and, and the answer-
No. It's, it's a lease. It's a lease. It's a portion of the property that's leased, is my understanding.
Other questions of the clerk?
When I go by there, I see a lot of cars parked there. Do they rent the parking lot? I mean, or is that part of the school?
I don't know the answer to that.
So, to clarify, the language of the ordinance does not speak to leases or use of the property in any way. It only speaks to the parcel upon which the school is located. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions for the clerk? Yes, council waiting.
Could you, do you have knowledge of when the seven fifty was determined by the council? Probably five or six years ago? I'm not sure. Maybe city manager might know.
Well, I'm looking at the footnotes here when the ordinance was amended or passed. And the, it looks like that this section was last amended in twenty twenty-one, and it was first enacted in March of, or sorry, May of twenty nineteen.
Any other questions for the clerk?
Yes, sorry. Just to clarify, so, in the application and the inspection process, the parcel with the leased property for the school is what address?
Fifteen Sacred Heart Place is the address.
Any other questions for the clerk?
Does the school have the same address as the parcel?
I, I believe so. This is the same property line. When you look at it up, that's, it's, this is the same address for the, for the whole property.
Any other questions from the council for the, for the clerk? Not seeing any, we'll move on. The applicant can now present rebuttal information to the council if you'd like.
I just, I just, can I ask one more question? I'm just trying to get all the facts here.
You, no. You can present any rebuttal information that you'd like for, for the council.
I'm ninety-five percent sure that the church and the school do not have the same mailing address. They would get separate. And I apologize. I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I'm just trying to- just trying to lay out all the facts. So I don't know how they would have the same. I know I have a lot of leased properties, and there's no way the church is getting the same mailing as the school. So I don't know how that's broken down. But they have a lease, and I'd love to see the lease, to see what entitles them to the property. Because the whole argument here is they do not control the property. Okay? Therefore, that is not their boundary line. And if we do that, we have the ability to get to that 750 rule by me spending more money by reducing the thing. I'm just looking for a path here. I don't care if this gets done today. If I need to do certain steps, I will. I'm just looking at a path here so this doesn't have to go any further. I don't want to go into any deeper to find out what's going on. I just want to get, find a solution. That's why I'm, I know she's got a job. I got a job. We all got a job. But there's no way that building has the same mailing address, and I will find that out. I don't know how they have the same address. One's A, one's B, I guarantee it. I got a strip mall, A, B, C, and D, probably something like that.
Are there any further questions of the applicant from the council? Counsel Collins.
A question, but maybe it's, in your, in your medical marijuana license, your address is P.O. Box in Lewiston. So that's not the property owner of the building. Oh, sorry, Dan Booton, he has a P.O. Box. So yes, he could have a different mailing address, but it might not be linked to the property. So I
Absolutely. Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant from the council? Not seeing any. If there's any member of the public who'd like to comment on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll move on. Any further questions of the council?
Mayor, I just have one thing, if I could. I just looked it up. The address of the church, Sacred Heart Church, is 8 Sacred Heart Place. The parcel that the school is on is 15 Sacred Heart Place, which is the line to be measured to. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council?
Yeah, so to clarify, your, add a question to your clarification, thank you, is the 400, the measurement that was done was done to the parcel that the leased school property is on?
It was, it was done to the property line of 15 Sacred Heart Place. So that's the location of the school. Yes.
Can I, can I borrow that? That's not a
Other, any other questions from the council?
Just trying to
Not seeing any. The appeal hearing is closed, and deliberations of the council can begin. So discussion by the council. Counsel plat.
Not much of a discussion. I guess I just, my comment is that I think we're, in this presentation conflating two issues. One is the hearing that we're here for, which is an appeal, and the other is what actions could maybe be taken in the future to remedy that. So I hear everything you're saying. I appreciate you being here. What we vote on today, not necessarily connected to some of the remediative efforts that you've brought up, there could, you know, I think that's all I wanted to say.
Anything further? Any further discussion by the council? So a couple of observations. I think that, given the constraints of the public hearing that we're in, what the question is before the council is not whether the policy that's set forth in the ordinance is good policy, a bad policy, should have been done some other way, should be modified. The council has to rely on the language before them in the ordinance. I think it's clear that by the applicant's own statements, that measuring property line to property line, the property on which the proposed dispensary sits to the parcel on which the school sits is less than 750 feet. The ordinance does not speak in any way to whether the school is operating on property they own, they lease, they borrow, somebody gave to them, and let some be there. The question, I think, before the council is, is this a school that fits within the definition of the ordinance? And by the information that was provided by the clerk, this clearly is a qualifying school. And it, I don't think there's any question what parcel it sits on. What they use for a mailing address, in my opinion, is immaterial, as it's not spoken to in the ordinance. It's clearly whether or not the parcel that it sits on. So I guess the final comment I would make is that I understand the applicant's frustration was something that might have been said to them by a member of the staff, but it seems clear from the information that was provided to us this evening that when an actual application was made, the application was made in writing, which is the process, the application was denied. So I can understand the frustration, but in, in hearing the presentation this evening, it seems to me that the council has no other alternative other than to deny the appeal. And to the matter of waiver, there's no authorization within the ordinance for the council to provide a waiver. I think the council's action is either to deny the application or approve the license that was previously denied by the clerk. Is there any other discussion by the council? Is there a motion? Counsel plat.
So moved, I'll move to a vote.
Excuse me?
I'll move to a vote.
And, and you're moving to deny?
I'll move to deny, deny the appeal. And as I said, I appreciate the applicant being here. And I think maybe there's work to be done in the future, if you'd like to reach out to the council. But for the purposes of this hearing, I move to deny the appeal.
So just so we're clear for the record here, Counselor Platt, you've moved to deny, assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong here, that you're denying based on the fact that the, the parcel upon which the marijuana dispensary is to be cited is less than 750 feet, measurement from the parcel in which a qualifying school sets upon. Is that correct?
Correct. Based, based on the setback being incongruous with our ordinance adopted by this council at whatever time it was adopted.
Second.
Second, abide, Counsel Walker.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Carey.
I have a, if you want to consider a draft findings of fact, may consider that. Doesn't So if I may, Mayor, procedurally, if this is something that is consistent with the motion that you're, that you're drafting, you would amend the motion to adopt this, and you may want to add language specifically to address that, the issue that you
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to use this to amend what we just voted on.
Well, we haven't voted yet. There was a motion in front of us to deny, and you're moving to amend to adopt the, the motion findings and conclusions. Is our second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. Discussion by the council. Vote will be by show of hands on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? The amendment, motion is adopted. We're back to the main motion as amended. Further discussion by the council. Counsel Mills.
I would just like to comment that I'm very sympathetic to the gentleman that's here. And, but, given the facts and given the way the ordinance is written, I'm agreeing with Counselor Platts, and, and I'm going to have to vote to, to deny the appeal.
Any other further discussion by the council? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to the next item, which is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Program Home Consolidation Annual Performance Evaluation Report for Program Year 2024. And Ms. Holmes, I think, will provide a brief overview.
Very brief. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel. So as you, I think you all know, every year, the CAPR comes up to be, have a public hearing, and then it's been, it's been out in the public already, and then it will come back, and any comments will be submitted to HUD along with this. Did want to just bring a few things. This is a five-year plan that was created five years ago. So you may see some significant swings in some of the percentages. And so therefore, when you look at things like public infrastructure being 357% above target, it's because when the plan was put together, this fifth, this fifth year would have been doing other things than what we wound up doing. And obviously, when we start putting money into infrastructure, like the Resource Center, that makes a big change in what's happening there. Other things that we looked at, public services were 504% over target. Again, this has to do with the Resource Center because we, before, we were counting, you know, the scholarships we were able to provide, other organizations we could help. Now, all those people that are coming to that Resource Center are being counted into this document. When it comes to the underproduction in affordable housing, because the, over the last few years with COVID, the system's been flooded with other dollars. Home dollars have become much less attractive to developers. So that would be part of it. Another piece of it was that the lead work that we were doing was not able to be counted because no home dollars were put into this. So we can't actually put it. If you look at the narrative of the whole document, you'll see some of that explained in there as well. PSY was one of the things that were highlighted, and that $300,000 was put to that through ARPA funds. There's also a grant from Hanford that helped funding that, as well as some spur-wink match money there. And then general assistance was also brought to our attention as one of the questions. And looking at year-over-year numbers, we are down considerably, almost 30% as far as total number of cases. And our staff has changed. So before, we had basically three people doing that work, and we still have three people. But one of those people with the new Resource Center is now being partially paid through the HUD funds, as well as some GA funds, to provide that frontline person who is greeting everybody for the, for the center and making that happen. So we're also spending a lot more time with these clients because we're trying to find them other resources, and we're starting to track those things, and we'll be able to provide those numbers again next year, where we can show where we're actually saving the city money by having them go to other places to get their, their needs filled. So that's going to, the things that the CAPR is about, and we appreciate any input. If you have any thoughts or questions, please send them to us, and then we pass it on to HUD.
Any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Collins.
Just a comment. Thank you, Glenn. Answered several of the questions that I had. It was just very thorough and very dense report, and I know because of regulations. So I think the one follow-up, I mean, you've referred to the affordable housing, but as we're thinking forward, are there any, I mean, you talk about market forces, right? Is there any, any steps, you know, that you would recommend the city council think about in terms of that, beyond that?
I think the city has taken a lot of steps over the last few years in that direction already. What I would say is that those market forces are now working again. So as all that other money that we had less rules and regulations is drying up, home funds become more attractive, and some of the other new money coming out from the federal government also has a lot of the same rules as the home dollars does. So that's it. The other thing is the home dollars may just go away, too.
Other questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes. We'll open up the public hearing on this item. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding the CDVDG Home Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the Program Year 2024, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The public hearing is closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is order 8809152025, a public hearing regarding 67 Minut Avenue, parcel ID 240-271, on the prompt action to secure the structure. This background for the council introduce this. This evening, we'll have two hearings on this matter. This agenda item is the first hearing. First, the council will determine whether the structure at 67 Minut Avenue posed a serious threat to public health and safety on August 29, 2025, within the meaning of Section 2856 of Title 17, and if so, whether the threat to the public health and safety required prompt action. The second and next agenda item, the council will determine whether the structure currently poses a serious threat to public health and safety, and if so, what must be done to secure the structure. This structure is owned by Miracle Enterprises LLC, Mason Resources Finances Limited, and Daniel Arlejoy have encumbrances on the real estate. At this time, I would ask any owner or party in interest to introduce yourself, including your name, address, and position. Is there any owner, party in interest, or representative present?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Xu Chang, and this is my boss, Ms. Shi, but she's English, she's no good. So, so I just, may I come invite my, my partner, Steven, is our company worker, and we'll introduce this problem. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, so, so that's fine. She can come up to the podium if someone would like to help with translation. That's perfectly acceptable. For the record, if we could have whoever's going to, the parties going to be, and the person that's helping represent them, if they could provide their names, also the organization and the address of that organization.
Ms. Shi, very important meeting, actually, now. So yesterday, we fly 16 hours from Hong Kong to here, just we attend this meeting. So, Steven?
Hi, Mayor. My name is Stephen Persp, and I'll be representing, obviously, our client today, Ms. Shi, on the property. The understanding that we have, obviously, what I've been, obviously, given so far on this property is that it's deemed unsafe. We've actually been given information, obviously, on a later date, so we, I'm actually, obviously, trying to have them to understand what's going on with the property. So I'm here, obviously, with a very much little intelligence on what's going on to the property itself, actually, because the last employee that she had, who was working for her, is actually not working for us no more, and he failed to give us this information. So we've actually flown in.
So at this point, sir, alls we need at this point is a clear representation of who the parties are, what, what organization you represent, and what that organization's address is. We'll, you'll have an opportunity to provide additional information.
Right, okay.
So
Obviously, Manor 67, is that correct? Obviously, that we're speaking about?
67 Minut Avenue, that's correct.
Yeah, correct. To the information I've been given, it's just been deemed unsafe with the, with the property itself. So I have actually no, no understanding of what is going on with the property. We've flown in, obviously, yesterday to, to, obviously, discuss this, and obviously, to try and rectify the building itself. How can we do this moving forward?
So, so just, just so we're clear for the record, this lady is the owner of the property, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Yes.
And, and is she own that property directly or through a business?
She owns it through a business.
And, and what business is that that owns the property that she's here representing?
The business itself is
If I could help with that, is it Miracle Enterprises LLC?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have the information you need? Great. Thank, thank you very much. So you can have a seat, sir, for the moment. Is there any other owner, party, in interest or representative present? Is there any other owner, party, in interest, or representative present? Does any member of the Council know an owner or another party in interest or have knowledge about this matter that means you could not failly or impartially hear the facts and decide the matter based on the evidence presented at this hearing? This hearing will be conducted according to the Mayor's Procedures for Dangerous Building Hearing, which are included in your packets. For the first hearing, I accept into evidence the Code and Fire Department's previously provided Exhibits A through J. For the Council members, that will be in your notebook, Tabs 3 through 12, all of which has been previously posted in the meeting packet. I would now ask the Auburn Planning Permitting Code Department to present the City Council with information relevant to the matter before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Eric Cousins, Director of Public Services, and to my right, if you want to introduce yourself, David.
Good evening, everybody. I'm David O'Connell, Fire Prevention Officer for the Auburn Fire Department.
On August 29th, as Executive Director of Public Services, I made a determination that the building at 67 Minet Avenue, which I will refer to as the structure, posed a serious threat to public safety and health. Further, I determined that the threat to public sa- public health and safety required prompt action and ordered that the structure be secured. That determination is in your packets as Exhibit A. Tonight is the hearing for the Council to determine whether the structure posed a serious threat to public health and safety on that day, and whether the prompt action that we took was required. On September 5th, 2025, a notice of this hearing was recorded in the Andrus Goguen County Registry of Deeds in Book 11913, Page 203, a copy of which is included in your packets as Exhibit B. The notice of the hearing indicates that Charter Liquidation Trust is a party in interest by virtue of a mortgage recorded in the Andrus Goguen County Registry of Deeds. The mortgage was subsequently discharged by a recording in Book 4292, Page 101. The discharge was not picked up in the initial title search because it was incorrectly indexed. Charter Liquidation Trust is no, is not considered to be a party at interest. The structure is located on land which I will refer to as the parcel and is identified as Parcel ID 240271 on the City of Auburn tax maps. Property information for the parcel on which the structure is located is included in your packets as Exhibit C. The parcel and the structure is owned by Miracle Enterprise LLC by virtue of a quitclaim deed recorded in the Andrus Goguen County Registry of Deeds, a copy of which is included in your packets as Exhibit D. Mason Resources Finance Limited holds an interest in the parcel and structure by virtue of a mortgage deed recorded in the Andrus Goguen County Registry of Deeds. A copy of the mortgage is in your packets as Exhibit E. Daniel R. LeJoy holds an interest in the parcel and structure by virtue of an intercreditor agreement recorded in the Andrus Goguen County Registry of Deeds. A copy of that agreement is in your packets as Exhibit F. On September 8th, 2025, Miracle Enterprise LLC was served with a notice of hearing and the determinations. The acceptance of service is in your packets as Exhibit G, and they were present here tonight, representing their interest. On September 8th, 2025, Mason Resources Finance Limited was served with a notice of the hearing and the determinations. The acceptance of service is in your packets as Exhibit H. On September, last week, the first week of September, we sent notices out for service to Daniel R. LeJoy. He was not served a notice of the hearing as of tonight. Last Thursday, I did speak with him on the phone, explained that we had been trying to serve him. He agreed to accept service, and he indicated that he would be here tonight at 7:00 PM for the meeting. He has not shown, we have not physically served the paper notice, but I did, I did have a conversation with him on Thursday, and the city attorney emailed him with a, the ability to accept service via email, and as of today, he has not responded to that. But we did have a conversation about the hearing, the time, and the purpose of it. And he indicated that he would be here tonight. Fire, Auburn Fire Prevention Officer, David O'Connell, to my right, and I will describe the conditions at the property, and we're here, also here to answer any questions that you may have about what we, what we saw at the property and the conditions that exist.
Excuse me, Mr. Cousins, your observations are in Exhibit J, is that correct?
They are in a PowerPoint presentation, Exhibit J, and I'll also show it on the screen so members of the public can see it as well. So my name is Eric Cousins, Auburn Executive Director of Public Services. I have approximately 23 years' experience as a main certified code enforcement officer. My certificate number is 738. And David?
So my name is David O'Connell, Fire Prevention Officer, like I said, for the Auburn Fire Department. I've been 14 years in this position as the Fire Prevention Officer doing code enforcement. I'm certified not through, there's a discrepancy, it says Main Certified Fire Inspector, but I'm actually certified through the NFPA as a Fire Inspector One. I've been in that position for many years.
So in the following slides that were provided in the packet, they've been available online as well since last week, we'll go over the Exhibit J in your packet and describe the conditions at 67 Minet Avenue. That caused the structure to pose a serious threat to public health and safety, and that required our prompt action on August 29th. Again, I'm Eric Cousins, Director of Public Services. Friday, August 29th, I was notified that the structure at 67 Minet Avenue was unsecured at a ground-level window, and issued a determination to se- secure the structure the same day. This is a photo from South Gulf Street of the unsecured window. You can see it at the sort of left center, over the low-level roof at the bottom of the image. After receiving that notice, I visited the structure on the 29th. A couple days earlier, on August 26th, I had visited the site, and I did not observe the same opening in the building where this one is open on the 29th. I concluded that the openings were created recently and that there could be someone inside the structure. The structure represents a significant hazard to the community and surrounding properties when it is unsecured due to risk of fire. A fire at this structure is likely to cause significant risk to people and damage to surrounding property and public infrastructure. I have established contact information for the owner and immediately emailed the contacts to have the structure secured, with no response on Friday, August 29th. And if you'll note, that Friday is the, the Friday before the long Labor Day weekend. After no response, I contacted the city attorney. He spoke with the owner's counsel, and at the time, the owner's legal counsel did not have the authority to grant permission to enter the structure. I determined that before securing the structure, an inspection was needed to confirm that there were no people in the building. The city secured an emergency inspection warrant that afternoon from a district court judge to enter the structure and verify that it was, in fact, vacant before we secured it. Myself, David O'Connell, to my right, and Auburn PD Lieutenant David Moore, entered the structure and inspected it at approximately 2:30 PM. We did confirm that it was empty. There was no evidence of people being in the building while we were there, and that was the afternoon of August 29th. Auburn Public Works secured the building promptly after the inspection, and the property was determined to be vacant and abandoned at that time. It was necessary to secure the structure to reduce the hazard that it represents to the community and surrounding property. With that, as part of this hearing, we are asking the Council to determine that it was, in fact, a dangerous structure, based on the definitions in the statute that have been shared with you, and that prompt action to secure that structure was necessary on the 29th of August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cousins. Any questions from the Council to Mr. Cousins and Mr. O'Connell at this point? Counsel Plaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a clarifying question, Eric, to what you just said. So is the structure secured now, after you went in there, or is it still unsecured, and that's what we're here to?
So the structure, as far as I know, is currently secured. As of this morning, it was secured. What we're asking is for on August 29th, when it was unsecured, were the actions to secure it warranted and to take that prompt action without notice because it was a hazard to health and safety?
Thank you for that clarification.
Counsel Whitey.
Did you see any signs of human occupation inside the building?
So we didn't see any people inside the building. We did see things, you know, trash, candy bar wrapper, couple of fire extinguishers, things that lead me to believe that there have been people in the building. We also saw a broken window that I don't believe was broken on Tuesday, a few days before that, on the third level. That was clearly broken from something being thrown or, or striking the window from the interior. The glass flew outward, so we believe people have been in there. They were not in there when we were there for the inspection.
Like that, they also breached one of the elevator shafts, which wasn't like that before. They broke every one of the doors and the stairwells that would allow, if there was a fire, to freely move through the entire building from stem to stern, as well as the pictures that have already been presented to you about the collapsing of the certain floors, as well as the, the roof rafters as well.
Further questions from the Council? At this time, if the representatives from Miracle Enterprise LLC would like to present any information to the Council about this matter, please approach the podium and do so.
Sir, so the, to my understanding of, obviously, the information that has been passed out from the August of 29th, as you said, the structure was deemed as dangerous. Who was actual informed? Was it, was it my client, Ms. Shi, who was informed of the, the damages and, obviously, the structure being unsafe, or the property being deemed as unsafe?
Yep, I'm going to answer that. I have established contact information for Miracle Enterprises LLC through a lawsuit that was completed last year with a judgment in the city's favor, and we've been instructed to contact Bin Wang. We did email him, but I also copied the other people that were part of those communications.
So the gentleman that you've just mentioned there, he has, actually doesn't work for Ms. Shi no more, so we have no contact. So the, the information, obviously, the, with the property being deemed as unsafe, we had no understanding of that, of that being given to us. So obviously, we've received that information only recently, so that's why we've obviously jumped on a flight to get out of here and try and to, you know, sort the situation out and try and work with you guys and obviously make this building safe and moving forward. If there's anything, obviously, we can do, obviously, myself and my client are happy to obviously work with you and obviously try and get this done. But like I said, obviously, we put our hands up, and obviously, we understand that the problem is that the building is deemed as unsafe to the public, and we, obviously, we don't want that happening. Moving forward, we want to obviously work with you and obviously try and get this rectified and obviously sort it out.
All right, so ju- just to clarify, so the scope of the matter that's before the Council right now is the actions of August 29th. We will talk further in the next agenda item about ongoing issues. So do you have any information that you'd like to present to the Council regarding the status of the building on August 29th, before it was secured by the city?
No, obviously, like I've, I said, sir, we, we, we had no information regarding the 29th. My client, obviously, was in, in Hong Kong at the time. We don't, we don't actually live here. The information that was given to Wong Bin, he actually doesn't work for Ms. Shi no more, so the information was never passed on to ourselves. Obviously, we found out this information through a, a third-party person, and obviously, we've taken it quite seriously. All of us have jumped, obviously, on a flight out here to try and rectify this and to try and work with you guys and to try and make this, obviously, a safe building, obviously, so no one else, obviously, breaks in and is in danger.
Great, thank you. Do you have any, any further information to present to the Council on this, on this item? Are there any questions of the Council? Not seeing any, we'll close the record. Excuse me? Mr. Carey?
Yes, if I may, in your, in the agenda packet was a letter from the owner's counsel. I don't believe it was labeled as a particular exhibit, so if you could, I'd suggest you include that in the record as well before closing. It was on, let me, I can find you the page number in a moment. It was Page 107 of the agenda packet, of the entire agenda packet of this evening.
From Zach Brandwine?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Move to accept this item?
Yeah, so I, no, you don't need to. So, so this was a letter from Zach Brandwine to the Auburn City Council dated September 11th, 2025, and we'll accept that letter into the record. Anything further, Mr. Carey?
Not at this time, Mayor. If I could just note that I did receive a response from one person copied on that email on August 29th, Hashan Liu, that was part of that group, saying that they would arrive sometime in September to secure the building. And this morning, I received an email from Bin Wang, who doesn't work for them anymore, letting me know that the property owner would be in Auburn today and would likely be here tonight.
Thank you. Deliberation by the Council?
It seems to me that the, the staff did the right thing based on the circumstances, so I support the action they took.
Any other questions, comments by the Council? Counsel Collins.
I just support the same, reinforce that. I just, you know, Section 2856, a municipality has the right to secure buildings that pose a serious threat to the public health and safety, and you had to do it in prompt action, which is also part of that statute, so.
Any further? If not, I would turn the Council's attention to Tab 13 in your binder, which is a draft finding of fact, excuse me, not, wrong, sorry, wrong tab. Tab 2, for this, for this first hearing, I'd turn your attention to Tab 2. There's a draft finding of fact, conclusion of law, and order. It would be appropriate for Counselor to move the adoption of the finding of fact, conclusions of law, and order.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as noted in the packet related to 67 Minet Avenue, Tab 2. I second that.
The finding of fact, conclusions of law, has been moved and seconded. The discussion by the Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Carey?
The Council may want to consider a friendly amendment onto Paragraph 9, which is on the second page. The, this anticipates that Mr. LeJoy would have been served by the sheriff, so the, the Council may want to edit that to some, some to the effect of Mr. Daniel R. LeJoy was sent a copy of the notice of hearing. Director Cousins spoke with Mr. LeJoy about the hearing, its date and time, and the purpose of the hearing.
I'd like to move to amend the motion as the Counselor noted.
So Counselor Milk says move to amend the motion at Item 9 in the findings of fact and conclusion of law to note that Mr. LeJoy was not directly served, but Mr. Cousins had a conversation with him in which he was notified of the date and time of the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Gary. Discussion by the Council? If not, the vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion to amend is adopted. We'll return to the main motion as amended, which is the adoption of the findings of fact and conclusion of law. Further discussion by the Council. Not seeing any. The Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We will now move on to the next agenda item, which is the associated second hearing. This is order 8909152025, a public hearing regarding 67 Minet Avenue, parcel ID 240-271, on the request for ongoing order to secure the structure. So again, this item is the second hearing, which council will determine whether the structure at 67 Minet Avenue currently poses a serious threat to public health and safety, and if so, what action should be taken. I accept into evidence all evidence provided in the first hearing, including all exhibits, testimony, argument, and council deliberation. I also accept into evidence the code department's previously provided exhibits N and O, which counselors will find under tabs 14 and 15 in your binder. I would now ask Mr. Cousins from the planning, permitting, and code department to present the city council with information relevant to this matter before it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. As the mayor noted, in addition to the evidence already in the record from the first hearing, we're here to provide the following. On September 5th, a notice of the hearing was recorded in the Intra-Scoggin County Registry of Deeds, book 11913, page 203, a copy of which is included in your packets as exhibit N. Fire prevention officer David O'Connell and I are here to describe the current conditions at the property, including evidence gained on August 29th, 2025, at the inspection to confirm that the structure was vacant. I will note, and I'll share the pictures on the screen here after this slideshow. I've provided four additional photos for you tonight. I believe that'll end up being exhibit P, as the last one was exhibit O. And we'll share those on the screen after this slideshow. Again, my name is Eric Cousins, Director of Public Services. This hearing is a little bit different, where we are requesting an ongoing order to secure the property. So I think that'll be our chance to work with the owner to keep the building secured going forward and respond if it's not. The city's evidence includes the evidence of the after-the-fact hearing on the determination to the structure that you've already heard tonight. On August 29th, this is a photo of the second floor and ceiling collapse. In addition to the exterior openings, there is interior damage to the structure, including to the floors and the roof, that are making the building unsafe to enter, especially if you can imagine a situation where there's smoke or poor visibility. It'd be very dangerous to move around the structure and a high chance that you could fall through an opening from one floor to another. And I think David also mentioned the openings between floors and the stairways. These openings between floors from the collapse also are an opportunity for fire to spread between floors. City staff monitor the property regularly. When we're in the area, we may get a point to check, make sure there's no open windows or new unsecure openings. During this walkthrough, to verify that the building was vacant, it was clear that there's been deterioration since we were last in there in December of '24, and the conditions have worsened significantly. This again, August 29th. This is a photo of the third floor, ceiling collapse. We, fourth floor, sorry. We anticipate that the conditions will continue to worsen. And if the building is unsecured, it increases the risk to people, whether they're in there legally or illegally. And also increases risk to public safety responders and the general public. When we received the inspection warrant, it had been a long time since we'd received any rain. But as luck would have it, we got there. There was heavy downpours that Friday afternoon. And it really made it clear that there are more openings in the roof than there was last time we were in there. This is the exterior of the structure. The open window is secured. Public Works was there to do it, the first floor ground level of the structure. And for this hearing, we've posted the notice on the building. You can see that if you visit the site as well. And we are seeking an order to continue to secure the structure as needed and to clear and remove overgrown vegetation at the site to improve visibility for security and to reduce fire loads adjacent to the structure. The clearing was done last year in response to a court order in the city's favor. It did open up the view for that period of time, but it's really started to regrow and establish a new fire load on the exterior of the structure. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add.
I would say that when we had the vegetation cleared out, then we were able to limit the transient population that was in there. A lot of them like to stay underneath the front side of Minet Ave, underneath the stairwells and stuff like that. Since then, maintenance hasn't been done. And more than probable that we're going to have more people, you know, taking those places, which we want to try to avoid.
And we did have a fire there a little over a year ago, I think, at this point.
We've had a total of three that I'm aware of. One was quite some time back on the outside that never made entry to the building. It was set on the back alleyway against the metal door. It was never reported. There was another fire inside when we had vandals go inside the building and they were stripping copper and wire from the building. And they decided to try to burn the insulation off in the boiler that was inside the building. The fire department decided to make entry to that boiler because it was a safe location outside, directly outside. Fire didn't go anywhere. They were able to put out the fire inside the boiler. The third fire we had was a transient encampment that was outside near the building. And our fire department itself was driving by Engine 3 and just happened to see a large glow coming from the rear of the building. When they made down South Goff Street, they found 30 to 40 foot flames off the side of the back of the building. And they were able to extinguish it. So, and it was isolated to the outside of the building.
And these are pictures to demonstrate that the vegetation is growing thickly near the building and up the side of the building. This is the rear of the structure. These were taken this morning, September 15th. And to the left here is a picture of the front of the structure, along Minet Avenue, where David O'Connell mentioned that when there's vegetation here, there are places to hide under stairways and other spaces up against the building. And then at the rear of the building is another view of the vegetation there. So with this hearing, we're seeking an order to keep the building secured going forward and authorize the city to secure it if they are not responsive to securing it. And also to clear the vegetation. And we'd be happy to work with them for exactly what that looks like and what the maintenance plans need to be to keep the vegetation down to a safe level.
Questions from the council?
I can say one.
Questions from the council for staff? Counsel, please.
Thank you. With, if we approve the ongoing order, is it simply to keep the structure secure? Are we giving, are we giving these folks, you know, a bullet list of items? Vegetation, securing, open holes in the building, you know, collapsing roofs? Are we giving them line checklists? Or are we just saying, read our ordinance and keep it secure?
So we have an existing court order that obligated them to make certain improvements at the structure. Some of those improvements were made, securing the building. Some of them weren't. Tonight, we're just asking for an order to keep the building secure and to maintain the vegetation so it's not the same level of hazard that we're seeing now with those things, those things missing. And I think Mike can add any, answer any other questions related to that.
And just to be clear about that, between any existing court orders, the language of existing state statute, I'm assuming that, as in the past, the staff will work with the owner to help identify where code enforcement and the fire department see gaps between the current condition of the building and what's necessary to maintain it in a safe condition. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we're happy to do that. We just have not recently had a way to communicate with them to continue that.
Other questions, comments by the council? So, Mr. Carey, I do have one question. I noticed in the prior hearing, in order to enter the building, warrant was required from the district court. On an ongoing basis, I'm assuming the process here as a city would notify the owner. If they didn't timely make the corrections, the city would make them. Does the city, is the city required to go to the district court every time they want to enter the building?
There's a, there's a city ordinance that authorizes staff to do it. It's similar to a criminal situation. If there's a Fourth Amendment search and going to a judge to show probable cause, is that, is that much of a higher standard? So short answer is no. There was, the staff had authority if the judge hadn't considered the item that day. But that is a, or with the consent of the owners. Another possibility, if the owner would consent to write it into the order, that staff have that, have consent to do that before securing the property. Another option.
Thank you. Other questions of the staff? Don't, sir, go ahead and provide any information that you'd like to provide regarding this matter, which is the ongoing securing of the building.
Yeah, sure. Obviously, what Eric has said, obviously, with myself, I totally agree that the building is deemed dangerous. And obviously, anyone entering that building is at risk. Obviously, as proven with the pictures, the roof is dangerous. And obviously, the entering of the building. And obviously, my client would agree on this as well. Moving forward, we will, we'll work with yourselves and obviously, deem this building safe again. Going back to 2024, she obviously did a lot of work on the property itself. And she, you know, containing that the buildings, windows, doors, oil tanks, perimeter walls, et cetera, were repaired. But you know, to come in back, obviously, and forth to this location and leaving it unattended is obviously gotten such a bad state that it does need repairing. And obviously, like we said with Eric, we're happy to work with you and obviously make this building safe. We don't want to go any further forward having any issues with yourselves. And obviously, we, our idea and our plan is to make this building obviously better as it goes on in time and investing money into it. So, yeah, we don't really want to have any problems or issues with you. We will work alongside you. And obviously, there is a plan you can put. And obviously, maybe contacting myself, obviously, in the future now and bullet pointing these issues that are raised and obviously your concerns. And obviously, we can invest into this and make it safe and obviously make the building a better place.
Do you have anything further?
No, that's it, sir. Thank you.
I believe she does have something.
I don't speak Chinese, but obviously, he can translate. Obviously, she.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yeah, she say, last year, she got the notice, say this building is danger. But at that time, she, she still take care of the baby. Yeah. So, yeah, last week, she got the email. Then yesterday, he fly to here. She just want, you know, she want, she gonna make a plan, make sure this building can be safe. So she say, before she had someone take care of this building. But since a couple months ago, she tried to reach the guy, but there's nobody answer. And the guy take, steal all stuff with his, her house in Auburn. So yesterday, she has a local contractor gonna be take care with the building in the future, yeah. Okay. So she, she says she has a already have a plan. And she gonna back to China, back to Hong Kong tonight. And in about a couple weeks, she gonna make a plan how to fix the building and reuse this building, yeah. So since 2015, the state governor came to China when she planned buy this building, this project. And then it's a cold, since COVID. And this is an immigration project. But it's since the USA stopped this project. So, and as 2021, the COVID. So they have like the hard time with the, it's a real big job. They don't have enough money. But after COVID, her company, it's getting better. So she gonna plan in next about a year, she gonna reuse this building, yeah. So she say, if we can update all the information, that's gonna be better because she gonna back to Hong Kong tonight. And she gonna has a new crew take care of this building. So if we can update all the information on the file. So she says she gonna be, has a local contractor take care of all the stuff, just like outside and the stuff and the plants and the inside where the damage, they gonna, someone gonna come down, make sure it's safe and fix it. She say, anyone had any problem, any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? I guess the only, the only question I have is I, as I understand what you've presented, there was some work done on this building in 2024. And someplace along the line, the person who was supposed to be monitoring the building is no longer there. So given the state of deterioration that the building has fallen into during that timeframe, I appreciate you're going to have a plan to mitigate this and secure the building. But given the, what's happened in the past, are you opposed to the city's requested action by staff to be able to secure the building on an ongoing basis if you aren't able to do that, if your plans don't work?
Yes, sir. So obviously, we're moving forward. We will make the building safe. And obviously, in the future as well. So there will be no problem with this. There was just a confusion of communications between other employees in the business that wasn't passing up the information to my boss. And obviously, like I've said, in moving forward in the future, if all the information goes through myself. And then obviously, I can make sure that this work gets done and carried out, obviously, moving forward.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So whereabouts do you live?
London, but I will be traveling obviously to and from this location and Hong Kong, et cetera. But again, with, with information being passed through myself, this won't, this won't be failed and obviously I won't let you down and I will take it very seriously. And I'll make sure that it gets done. Obviously, we don't want no danger or harm to any, any life. So this is, this will be taken very seriously moving forward.
Will you be checking in more regular or figure out a way that our either legal staff or planning and permitting team can correspond if they find more things that are wrong? And for you to keep, for them also to keep track of what you're doing?
Yes, ma'am. We will, we're moving forward. I will make sure that I will be making regular trips to and from this location, making sure that the property and the, obviously is, is progressing as it goes on in time. Obviously, we don't want, again, any, any danger or any hazards to any life. So I will be, you know, making more regular visits.
Counsel Milks.
So I'm glad to see that you folks are here. But given the history and the request from the city, I am, as the city councillor and responsibility to my city in making sure that in an ongoing basis, I support this order that's going to give the city the authority to secure that property, knowing that you're then going to work with staff. So I'm going to vote in favor of this and I certainly hope that you do what you say you're gonna do with the building.
I will do. I'm just letting you know.
So please pass, if you pass that on to, to the owner and let her know that we hope that she does what she says she's going to do. But we're giving the, I'm giving the authority to the staff to secure the building until further you guys work something out. That's what this order does.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this as well, but there's something, I mean, this is almost like a verbal handshake. I'd rather also have something more concrete in writing that staff can have so that they know what the blueprint is, so that they can know what steps and everything in order. And also our good counsel will know what's going on as well.
Sure. I agree. Thank you.
Other, other questions or comments? Counsel Whiting.
Yes, I, I concur with Counselors Milk and Gary and I think a written plan of action submitted to code enforcement would be excellent.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Cal.
Just also support comment said, I, I do, my, my grave concern is with the age of this building and with the amendments being done that now there's even higher risk of fire spreading. And given the size of this building and the proximity to some other properties, I, I could not do anything but support them having the ability to secure this building as quickly as they need to.
Mr. Carey.
I just wondered, Mr. Mayor, whether you wanted to explore whether they would consent to the city being authorized to enter the building to search if maybe. You'd asked earlier about the need for an inspection warrant. One option to avoid that is if the owner agrees that the city may inspect the building before securing it. So I don't know if you wanted to explore that with him.
And that's not in the current order? Okay, thank you.
We amend that?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, but yeah. Any other, any other questions or comments from the council? So I, I would concur with some of the other councillors. I, I think that clearly it's incumbent upon the owner to take appropriate action to secure this building. But given the, their performance over the last year or so, I think it's entirely appropriate. As some of the other councillors have pointed out, that the city take this action. So if that does not occur, that they have the ability to secure the building and make it safe in a timely manner. So I would turn the councillor's attention to tab thirteen, which is a finding of fact, conclusion of law, which concludes the draft finding of fact, conclusion of law and order. And based on Mr. Carey's, Mr. Carey's comments, if, if the motion maker would like to incorporate an additional item twenty four in the order, that'd be appropriate. Counsel Milks.
I'd like to amend the order to include that upon, prior to inspection or during inspection, the city may enter the dwelling, enter the building in order to make sure that it's safe inside, there's no people, there's no other things inside the building while they're securing the building. That, is that accurate, Mr. Carey?
Yes, sir. If I think, if I have it correctly, it's that before the city secures the structure, the city manager is designated, may enter the structure at any time to conduct an inspection to ensure that no person or fire hazard is present within the structure. Is that accurate?
I, I move that.
And, and also, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the language that you changed regarding service upon Mr. LaJoy in the earlier order, you would need to add that as well.
Correct. Well, carry forward.
So moved.
Hold on a second. Yeah, we, we, we don't, so just to be clear, Counselor Milks is moving the findings of facts and conclusion of law with two amendments from the written document that is found at tab thirteen with the incorporation of the changes regarding notice to Mr. LaJoy, as same as were incorporated in the prior order. And regarding inspections to be added is item twenty four. And Madam Clerk, do you have this? Thank you. So Counsel Milks has a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. Discussion, Counsel Platt.
Yeah, I, I think I just have a procedural question. We've, I agree with the order or the motion and the amendment, but we've amended it to seek the consent of Miracle Enterprises, no? Or are we authorizing ourselves to take this action? Or do we require the consent of this party?
Mr. Carey.
The, the language that Counselor Milks suggested would authorize a city manager to, or his designees, to enter the building to make sure that nobody's in there and no fire hatters and hazard is in there before securing the building.
Other discussion or question about the council? Counsel Whiting.
Yes, and I, I think this is something that should be amenable to the owner because it's in the interest of the property to be safe. Mutually beneficial.
The biggest risk I see is the risk of fire and the danger to our firefighters in such a dangerous building. And obviously, if that, that building burns down, then everybody loses. So the authority to have them go in for that reason, to prevent any of that.
And our new hundred and twenty million dollar high school, which abuts this property. So I, I think about that as far as safety.
Like to expand on that a little bit, councillor. It's not just fire, it's also structural, right? But we're coming into the winter months and we've had no, nothing moving forward to secure this building. Structurally, it's unsafe. We're gonna have a snow load in a couple of months. What's gonna happen when that roof is a flat roof that's got a weight load on it now that the roof's truss are already compromised? Where is the building gonna go at that point? So I think we gotta look a little bit broader and we gotta have some definitive benchmarks set in place by the owner to try to get this, take care of and possibly getting a structural engineer involved before this to try to get things safe.
Further discussion by the council. Counsel Whiting.
I thank Officer O'Connell for bringing that up because it actually gets to the point with it, and I was gonna address that, that with that roof damage, that it could reach a condemnation hearing in which we would be ordering you to tear down the building. So we'd rather not get to that point and that's why I suggested the plan of action, which should include Officer O'Connell's suggestions.
Just to be clear, the, the, the staff, including the planning and permitting, the flight department, have been working with the applicant regarding plans for this building. That should continue. I agree with the sentiment expressed by Counsel Whiting, that's not within the scope of this order, right? I think everyone understands that that will continue on. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counsel ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll now move on to order nine zero zero nine one five two zero two five, approving the renewal of an auto graveyard junkyard permit for Dawn's No Preference Towing, DBA Morris Auto Park at nine forty Washington Street North with conditions. For clarification of the council and the public, this is somewhat similar to what was on the consent agenda, but because there are conditions as there have been in prior years, the order is on, under new business. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Platt. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any public comment is closed. Discussion by the council.
Is there any reason, it's only on, there's no other reason that it's on here, there's no action that's needed or anything, right? We're just, it's the same as a consent, we're just a different.
This is to renew the license with the conditions similar to prior years?
Yep, no, no issues.
Counsel ready, Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are they following through with the conditions, restrictions and things they're supposed to be doing?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, we, we would bring this forward only if those conditions were being met and inspections were being done. The individual that's responsible for the property is here and is complying with staff's inspections when they, when they arrive on site.
Thank you.
Counsel ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is order nine one zero nine one five two zero two five, designating Philip Crowell, city manager, as a voting delegate for the City of Auburn for the Main Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting to be held on October eighth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Counselor Milk, seconded by Counselor Walker. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to reports. So a few items tonight. An update on the Home for Good project, which is the Housing First Initiative. It's well underway. Auburn Housing and Developers Collaborative are into the initial examination of the, of the parcels that are affected for environmental regulation and for surveying. And the option agreement for the property has been reviewed by legal and is being circulated to staff for signature. There was an updated tenant meeting at Barker that I attended. Counsel Gary attended as well, along with staff from Auburn Housing Authority and from the Drop-In Center. This was a follow-up meeting to one earlier in the spring to update them on the status of, the overall status of the Community Resource Center and to answer any questions they might have. Went quite well. Generally, I think people are supportive and appreciative of the progress that's been going on. The PAL ribbon cutting took place last week. It was a really great event. It's a fantastic facility. It'll have a really positive impact on the community. I want to thank Rita Bowdre, who's been the lady with the whip, keeping everybody in line and getting the project done on time and under budget. Thanks to all of the developer partners, the PAL board, staff, it was really a team effort by everyone to get us to where we are. And as I understand, it'll be opened for business on Monday. So great work by everyone, the early positive addition to the community. On housing, just to let the, the council and public know, I've been sitting on a group formed by Main Municipal Association, about seven elected or administrative officials from around the state meeting with the House Chair of Housing and Economic Development Committee regarding the, some passed, but mostly the carryover bills and the future actions the Housing Committee might take on housing matters. And lastly, the Public Library had their block party this, this last weekend. It was great. They had about four hundred participants, lots of kids, a couple food trucks, some music provided by students at Edward Little. So it was a really great time and very appreciative of the library for putting that on. Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting that we had at Barker was excellent, as usual. Our mayor was very kind, gracious. And what could have been maybe an hour meeting, I think went over two hours. But he very patiently answered every single question and then some from any and all of the tenants that came down. And we had a really good attendance and a lot of them were thankful that he was there and explained more of what was going on next door. And again, I thank him for having the meeting set up and put a few people's fears at rest.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel Whiting.
I'm gonna be riding in the Dempsey Challenge, fifty miles if I can make it. And donations to Old But Not In The Way, that's the team, Dennis Bergeron, Sharon Bergeron, Wendy Tardif, some other people. Contributions are welcome. It's charitable for the Dempsey, you know, foundation.
Counsel Cal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the general public and for those, if you want to let folks know in more too, we've scheduled a town hall meeting for the twenty ninth of September from six thirty to eight here in the community room. This kind of came about because there were, I was getting more and more questions around the Lake Street apartment complex and particularly what we're gonna be doing in the adjacent lot, which many of you may have seen. That has been withdrawn, but it will be a good, good way to kind of talk through that as well as be able to help make people aware, if they're not aware, of the great things like the PAL Center and other things going on. Related to that, I learned a couple of weekends ago when we went to Public Theater that Main State Music Theater has some events that they're coordinating at the New Auditorium at the, at EL. So I think that's great and we're starting to see the potential of that being a regional, regionally used facility. And similar to that, I learned last Friday from a colleague of mine at Main Health, she runs a program that's funded by Full Plates Full Potential and it's a training for culinary training with a, right now, there's a focus on helping those who do food service in schools to make healthier and more palatable options and help the kids learn. The training this year was held at EL and they loved it so much and they had people coming from all counties around. They're gonna do it again there because the facility was so great. So just wanted to highlight that for folks. Thanks.
Counsel Milks.
I just want to say it was just an awesome event at the PAL Center and, you know, big congratulations to Phil, Manager Crowell, on, and his accomplishment of what he's been able to, he and he's had help, but it's been a vision of his and I just want to say congratulations to him on that. And, and I'll pass along that I have, because I'm pretty involved in it with the young people that are playing basketball and there's, there's a lot of excitement about that building. I can tell you, there's, and, you know, the kids that are all playing basketball are excited to get in there and start using it. So there's, there's a lot of good things gonna happen in that building, I think.
Thank you. Counsel Whiting.
Nothing to report.
Counsel Walker.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Counsel Platt.
Thanks. I'd like to give an update. I asked Dr. Doris to give an update on hiring at the, in the school department. I, it's, it's something that has been a big part of the preschool year and so I wanted to share some stats for you guys. So to date, fifty-five staff members have been hired across the Auburn School District, including teachers, education technicians, tutors, subs, subs and support staff. Dr. Doris is pleased to report that this is, this applicant number is higher than in previous years, which from my perspective is due to just the great leadership and depth in the Auburn School Department, also possibly a function of our new high school. Um, Dr. Doris is pleased to report that this is, this applicant number is higher than in previous years, um, which, from my perspective, is due to just the great leadership and depth in the Auburn School Department, also possibly a function of our new high school. Uh, but we're in a good place, so I, I just wanted to share that. The Auburn School Department is feeling very positive about, um, the fall hires leading up to this school year. Um, I also asked, uh, Dr. Doris about vacancies. I think that's an important thing to track, uh, in the school department. Um, I've been told there are twenty-four vacancies remaining district-wide. Um, don't quote me on this, but I believe that is a lower number than we have seen in, in past years. Um, to quote Dr. Doris, uh, these openings include bus aides, bus drivers, education technicians and teachers. All classroom and special ed teacher vacancies are currently covered by long-term subs. So that's good. That's where we need to have warm bodies. Well, we need them everywhere, but that's incredibly important. Um, and that's it. I'll try and give you guys updates, you know, now and then, but I think, um, I think these metrics are a interesting little barometer to judge where we're at, so I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Representative Edward.
Yeah, the start to school was smooth, um, run freshman orientation, and it went really smooth. Um, of course, we have no phones at Edward Little now. I think they're implementing that in AMS too. Um, and I gotta spend Labor Day meeting with local unions across the state, especially with Chana Bellows, and I gotta see a huge turnout on the bridge over here for some kind of protest, I don't really remember. We have a home football game on Friday, if anyone wants to support EL.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. Again, thanks for the comments regarding the PAL Center. Really thrilled with what will take place there. Um, I think with our collaboration with the school department, when our staff began, uh, managing the facilities, it was quickly identified that the basketball hoops in the old high school gym would be great additions to the PAL Center. So those were secured and stored, and those will be installed, um, after, we'll install those ourselves rather than having the contractor do that to save some costs, but, uh, so four more basketball courts will be, uh, backboards, rather, will be installed in the, uh, in the new gym, so we'll be able to have side games as well. And so really excited about the, uh, the work and that, the effort from everyone, uh, related to that. I wanna thank those who, uh, were able to attend the nine eleven ceremony and appreciate, um, um, the staff at the Fire Department that consistently host that, as well as the blood drive that they do, uh, with American Red Cross. Uh, we had a great, great response in the community, as we do each year, and so appreciate, uh, the staff's time and response to that. Uh, last item is, uh, a thanks to our finance department. Uh, today was tax paying day, uh, September fifteenth. We had a steady, uh, stream of people into the building. Uh, our tax staff, uh, did, uh, a great job meeting the needs of the, our community that had come in to pay, pay taxes, so I, I appreciate everybody's work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I, uh, forgot, failed to mention, I wanted to congratulate, um, Lieutenant, uh, Harrington from the Auburn Police Department, who, um, just graduated as a member of the two hundred and ninety-fifth session of the FBI National Academy, which I thought was worth noting, and, and a great job for him, and, and fab- fabulous that that could be supported by our, our staff, so.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to the, uh, second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We have no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by councillor Platt, seconded by councillor Milk, so, uh, in favor. The council's adjourned.